Good evening, welcome to the State Council 2015 Council Meeting. Roll call done.
Mayor Boruski.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Burns.
Here.
Member Tucker.
Here.
Member Baker.
Yes ma'am.
Member Gifford.
Here.
Member Lynn.
Here.
City of Michigan Governor Gifford.
Here.
City Attorney Ash.
Here.
All stand for prayer and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we're standing, one nation under God, in the fifth school with liberty and justice for all.
We have a guest speaker, Tony Hayes, pastor of the Dayton Bellevue Christian Church. Is he here?
I am.
Good evening.
First of all, let me thank you for allowing me to address the council. I'm the minister at the Dayton Bellevue Christian Church. I've been there about seven years. And though I don't live in the city of Dayton, I love the city of Dayton. And every opportunity we get, we like to get involved in programs in the city from the church. And what I want to do is to present to you an idea that I presented to some gentlemen at a breakfast not long ago, some ministers and others. And it is what I call the 100 Men Pledge. And the idea would be, if we had this, would be not denominational, not affiliated with my church at all, but basically the idea of getting 100 men together who would make the following pledge. I pledge to love God. I pledge to love and protect and provide for my family. I pledge to serve my church and where you come in, I pledge to serve my community. There are all kinds of ways that people can serve the community without actually being involved in an official role or task. My idea of the 100 men would be a group of men who would meet on a regular basis, have all the kinds of things that a club would have, like committees and officers and whatever. But the idea would be, with regards to the community, if someone in the community had some kind of need, they could reach out, and this is where I want the city's involvement, maybe through the sheriff, through the police and the fire department. If someone had a need, they could call there. Someone could contact, to contact people with 100 men. Let's say that a single mom can't get her car started, it's going to cost her $100 to get a tow truck, maybe some one of the 100 men might be able to go there, get her car started for her. An elderly couple having trouble shoveling out their sidewalk, you could do this. And of course, the 100 men is just an idea of a group of people. After I came up with this idea and presented, I got on the internet and I noticed there's all kinds of 100 men programs, so I must have gotten into something. So the point is, this is something these guys could help in things like crime-infested areas. You know, one of the things that got me thinking this way is, there was a pastor up in Boston some years ago, and he got people from his church, and they all walked down into the area of the city where they were selling drugs. So you're out there trying to make a drug deal, and all of a sudden 150 Christian people from a local church come down and are just watching you conduct your business, okay? It makes you a little bit uneasy. So the idea of 100 men is like, it's not something you want one man to do, but if you had 12, 13, or 20 men, who would be able to sort of put on a 100 men shirt, or a hat, or something like that, to sort of walk around in areas where you would like to make certain people feel uncomfortable being, not to arrest them, not to challenge them, not to argue with them, but rather just to show that the men, this 100 men, are people who, what it is, they want to serve in addition to their church and their family, they also want to serve the community, be a part of the community. And I think if you stop to think about this for a minute, there's all kinds of possibilities for this. You know, mentoring programs for young kids at the schools and stuff like that. But most of all, just getting 100 men who are going to come together and pledge these pledges, there's no, again, there's no denominational affiliation. Someone from the Catholic Church is just as comfortable as someone from a Pentecostal church, because there's no church involved in it. It's just simply saying, these are basically traditional values that most Americans share. And I'm sure the people of Dayton, most of the people of Dayton share. So we're not asking, we're not going to do FBI checks on people or anything like that. But the idea would be, just to sign up 100 men, and once you've got the 100 men, you'd be able to sit down with them and find out what kind of abilities and talents they have, what kind of interests they have. And so some of them may be really good at, you know, what I just said, you know, working in the neighborhood and doing things, some of them may be really good with mechanical things, some may be good with doing things with carpentry or helping people in those ways. But basically, this is a way for 100 men to come together, and of course, it's not limited to 100 men, if you had more, and if you had less. You know, the point is, you have a group of people, a group of men who are saying, I want to do something to let my city know that I appreciate them and I want to work with them. And then if the police department, the fire department, or the city in general had some issues that they thought the 100 men group might be able to help with, then they would do that. So this is an interdenominational approach, just basically helping people to get, giving people a vehicle in which to serve. Having been in the ministry for many years, I know that there are a lot of people who would like to do things, but many times churches, because churches are so heavy on people like me, who are talkers, or that kind of thing, that there's no place for people to really give their gifts and to share back with the community. And so I think if you give them sort of an en ramp to service, I think there are a lot of people who might be interested, and I just wanted to come and share this with you and let people know that we're going to be doing this. And I've shared with you, this is just a little lockup of a possibility of the pledge card, where a person would sign that, and then they would become a part of this group, and then we would start meeting and assembling them and see what we could do to help the community. And does anyone have any questions? Or?
Yes, sir.
How do people get ahold of you?
You can get ahold, I've got, I brought some business cards.
Pass the meeting, other people are not here.
Okay. They can get ahold of me, I'm at, my telephone number, I'll give you that, is 859-801-1556. Or by email, it's T as in Tony, J as in Joseph, H as in Hayes, tjh2545@yahoo.com.
Do you have a Facebook page?
Yes, we have a Facebook page. We have a website, it's dvcchurch.org. That's Dayton Bellevue Christian Church, like the initials, dot org, dvcchurch.org. And then there's all the contact information would be on there, and there's also a link there to our Facebook page.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all I got. City, Mayor Gifford's report.
I've got a few things. First, I'd like to introduce Jay Brewer, who everybody should know, but he's a Dayton School Superintendent. He wants to give an update on what's happening in our latest progress from the building that we're in right now. We thank you for continuing to last use of the facility. We appreciate it.
No problem, our space is your space. Much easier being on this end, Murdo, I'll tell you that. Sitting on the other end, so this is good for me. I do want to thank the city and the city council for what I consider to be just outstanding collaboration between the schools and the city. I challenge anyone in the state to come in and match the relationship that we have down from the police with David. We've been meeting several times and have a lot of sidewalk conversations up there during school hours, after school hours. Mike in the fire department always at hand in anything that we need. Rick and I talk constantly during the winter, for sure, trying to get the snow planned, put together, and it's small things like that, because if he knows we're having schoolwork priority number one, and he knows if we're not, he can pull off and put the trucks out where they're on the city, so he's getting those heads up, go all the way. Relationship with the park board is growing. The collaboration with the field this spring was outstanding. I believe we're collaborating on even ordering mulch in to help. We do some of the cost of that. I know we collaborated on the buying of the safety net for the outfield, so that's been great. At any time I need anything from Anthony and Michael, they're right at hand. And I don't want to overlook our one-to-one readers that are in our school making a difference. Our kids go a long way, a long way for us. And we have an occasional chess guy that comes down. I think there's a rematch this spring?
Supposed to be.
It's bigger than Mayfield, Mayweather.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can check something out.
Okay. Yeah. Real briefly, we'll hit some of the highlights. We're continuing to improve our facilities this spring. You'll see us changing out all the old tired lighting around Dayton High School, its original lighting, it's kind of faded and needs a little updates. We're going with about a $13,000 project, put LED lighting down there. If you come down in the wintertime to some of those night events, it can be a little bit dark. So Michael's has kind of lighted up like a car sale lot down there. Hopefully I don't get a complaint that we're too bright, that would be the best thing you could get. We are collaborating with Crossroads Church for the third time on a spring project to paint and do some landscaping around the school, so we're excited about that. Most of you have probably seen it in the newspaper, the exciting news that goes along with our mission statement, and our mission statement we rolled out this year, and that's Inspire, Engage, and Grow, and Joe Neary was a part of that process. I continue to beat that every chance I can. But the growth's come in high for us. Dayton Independent Schools had the second highest percentage of student attendance, or not attendance, student enrollment this year. So we had a 7% increase in student enrollment, which puts us nearly, we bounced around a little bit, we're anywhere between 85 to 100 students above where we were at the beginning of last school year. So those of you who have followed Dayton School for about 19 years, we're losing about 30 or 40 kids a year. One time, Dayton had about 1,300 students. The beginning of last school year, we dropped to about 830. And if we would have continued in that trend, I'd be standing here today saying we're below 800. Fortunately, we've been able to reverse that, and we're over 900 students right now, and we're looking to grow again next year. So we're pretty excited about that. Two of the handouts that I have, one of the challenges that was given to me when I took over as superintendent was to try to retain all the students that live in the city of Dayton. And one of the things we're doing here is rolling out some new initiatives here and engagement. Part of our mission statement is up. You may have heard that Lincoln Elementary hit the state standard for proficiency this school year, so that puts them in the top 30% of all elementary schools in the state. Come a long way for that low elementary school that about four or five years ago was in the bottom 15% of the state. So the turn has to happen there at the elementary school. We're happy to say that at the middle school, the results of last year's testing hand us highest amongst what I call our River City peers in the area of academic achievement. So we don't want to get into name calling here, but we're proud to be the middle school. So you can see that the elementary's moving, middle school's coming around. High school still has some work, we'll openly admit that, but our college and career numbers are up, graduation rate's going to be up, and we're closing in bringing some of those little devils into the pipeline. What we're also excited to announce here on this sheet is, we're in collaboration, and collaboration is the spirit of Dayton Independent Schools, with the city and with our neighbors along the river and school districts, so we're partnering with Bellevue and Newport and Londo to take kids to the urban campus in Covington for Gateway. So our juniors and seniors who reach benchmark, and benchmark's not always easy to reach on UCT, so they have to hit for the standards, and we have some kids that are coming up a little bit short, and are a little bit disappointed that they're not able to take advantage of the opportunity that we're offering to them. We're offering them tuition-free Gateway Dual Credit, so they can go down to Gateway's campus and during their junior year earn 12 hours of college credit, tuition-free, and turn around their senior year and get 12 hours of college credit, tuition-free. So they could be heading out of Dayton High School with 24 hours of college credit. The real benefit of that compared to where we were in the past when we were partnering with NKU, which did a great job, and we could never control which classes they were. We were kind of at their whim of what professors were available, so sometimes you would get a speech class, sometimes you'd get a women's studies class, and sometimes they wouldn't roll them into what you have to study. These are all the basic English 101, English 102, your math. So consider it your core classes that these kids are coming out with, so we're excited about that partnership. And we're picking up the bill for that. That's going to be about a $20,000 to $30,000 pickup for the district now. We're still waiting, some of those could be tied into what's called the Mary Jo Young Scholarship, so we're hearing back from the state on that, so that could help us with some relief there. But we feel that's best to really, going back to our mission, inspire our students at a young level, to be talking about those college benchmarks and saying, hey, that's sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade year, you need to hit these benchmarks so that you can start at Gateway, urban campus down there, start your way for college credit. We're also creating two pathways in our freshman and sophomore year to get kids what we call career-ready, and they're going to be technology pathways, because I can't imagine any of our students going into a career in which they're not going to use technology. So they're going to be doing financial literacy, digital literacy, and also, if they test out, they have to test out to get the certification, but they can get what's called a Microsoft Office certification, and they can put on their resumes, being they have proficiency in Word, email, PowerPoint, Excel. I don't know about you guys, but I can get the Word and the PowerPoint, but the Excel, that one trips me up pretty good. We're excited to be offering that. We continue to offer Spanish 1 and Algebra 1 at 8th grade, and we have a plethora of online learning opportunities for students that are behind or students that are ahead. So we're excited about that. We continue to offer an ACT Boot Camp for students that are in their sophomore, juniors year, looking to sharpen up their skills for that. You guys are well aware of the great collaboration with the YMCA, program with Justine, and those buildings offering some fantastic after-school opportunities. And for the second year in a row, we're super excited about this, our 8th graders are going to Washington DC, so they have the opportunity to do that. And those of you who have visited our nation's capital here recently, it's just outstanding, the monuments and the history, and really planting that seed of that 8th grade so they can build off that background throughout their high school experience. I know Don is familiar with the summer ignition program, which is our seniors who graduated doing what we call a work-study program. We had some students up there last year, and I believe we're working with some students up there this year, so we've got about nine or 10 students that are federally funded, making about $10 an hour, and they work for the schools, they work for the city. And then once a week, through this program, they get career training, so they bring them in, talking about applications, interviews, just basic work skills, so we're excited to offer 10 of our seniors that opportunity. And then we're also excited to continue with our health clinic, which is on campus. So we've been up there at Lincoln, we have a nurse practitioner one day a week out there seeing anywhere between 15 and 20 kids. And then just this month, we have two fully-operating dental chairs in our elementary school, trying to do prevention for these little guys' teeth as they get older, so we're super excited about that. I do want to reiterate that you guys are invited to the Bellevue Dayton Kindergarten Readiness Summit, which is the Save the Dayton Saturday, May, and the ninth, which is coming up. It'll be over there at the Callahan Center. By no means do you have to feel like you have to stop in all day. If you've got 30 minutes, just stop in, you know, shake some hands, show some interest, we would appreciate that. That is a focus point for us, is the early childhood. We have found that the state a couple years ago started administering a test to all students coming into kindergarten, called a kindergarten readiness test. So the first week, we test all kindergarten students to get a baseline for where they are. Challenge for us is that our students coming into kindergarten, we only have one district in Northern Kentucky, and I'm the head of Newport, we had 28% of our students ready for kindergarten. The state holds, they have 80%. Our neighbors up on the hill, we're familiar with, they had 80%. We've got to do more at that level. We're already doing a lot. We offer universal preschool to all of our students, which cuts into my general budget, because the state's only funding me for students that meet with disabilities, so we're going above and beyond that. And we're also funding holiday kindergarten, where our students in the state only gives us half of the funding for that per child. So those cuts impact is how we spread out the other way, but we have to get them early and get them often. We're excited that we've gone out of the comfort zone, and we have Head Start now on our campus. They're fully stocked in the classroom at Lincoln, and they have three and four-year-olds all day. And we're going to be partnering with an organization a lot of you are familiar with, which is Children's Inc., who do high-quality daycare, and we're looking to expand our preschool program coming for next year for families that work. Some will be on a sliding scale, some will fully qualify for the Children's Inc., some will have to pay partially, but there could be an option for our preschool students to be on our campus at 7:30 and stay on our campus until 6 o'clock, until they needed to be picked up from work. So we feel like that's a great opportunity. So some of our students could be going from what I call four half-days to five full-days, and then Children's Inc. is going to work on summer wraparound programs that'd be in our building, so it's possible that they're going to be here all the time. So we're excited that Children's Inc. partnering with us as well to grow that early childhood piece, because we've got to get them early. Right now, with our kindergarten readiness numbers, we have our kids, and the amount of time from birth until they're five arriving in kindergarten, Dayton Schools has a 1% of the time. 1% of the time. You know, so even by expanding to taking the four half-days to the five full-days, still only going to give us about 3% of the time, but we'll do a lot more with that than we will with 1%. So we've got to continue to push out to the community and get those little guys ready. So open to questions? I know you guys have a big night, a long night.
I got one question.
Sure.
Your enrollment was up by 85.
About 85, yes.
Where did that come from?
It's across the board. You know, it's, I don't know if we're attracting honestly back to our school, but I think we're doing a better job of what we're doing in the school, so we're retaining the ones that do get here. And we are seeing growth at the high school, because, you know, for last year, we had about 35 kids graduate, or mid, or right around 40, and our sophomore class is sitting at 70. So those numbers will help, you know, we've got to hold them at that higher high school end a little bit better, and hopefully the programs like Gateway, the Microsoft Office will hold and attract them. The reality is, the state of Kentucky's also changed the dropout rate, which will go into effect next year. Students right now can currently come in at age of 16, as long as they're on the date or willing to sign them out, out they go. They've raised that to 18, which cuts both ways. Some of those kids really don't want to be here. I do think it's the best thing for them to be here at 18, but that challenges us to take those kids that at 16, we're saying, I'm done with this. They'll often come back, you know. We all knew it all at 16, so, but it will be a challenge for us to meet those needs of those guys that are struggling. We still continue to have students that are transient from Long River, so it's not uncommon for us to get seniors transferring in from another school that maybe only has four or five credits. Or a sophomore who shouldn't be a senior, who's 16, says, look, I can't get 21 credits, I'm dropping out. It's not going to happen anymore. That should help our enrollment, but I got to figure out, what am I going to do with that? It's a challenging group. It's a challenging group, that's a good question. But enrollment's pretty solid across the board coming up, so, you know, we're excited about the growth in enrollment, we're excited about the growth and development along the river. That's certainly going to help our tax base, with our goal eventually is to lower that property tax rate curve, like we realize that's hot, we'd like to bring that down. We do want to remind everybody, I know we had some great dialogue early in the year that this school of Dayton do not have a utility tax that we charge. We're only one of about 10 of the 174 districts in the state that do not charge for utilities, so Virgil shop on that ability for the lights and the AC, which I'm sure could be a decent amount of money. So I'll argue that, even though we have a high property tax rate, not charging the utility rate balances out to a pretty fair overall school tax rate for this city of Dayton. But we're trying to bring that down.
But like I always said, you've got a lot more employees than anybody in the city, and it takes a lot of money to have employees.
Yes. Yes. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. So again, I want to thank everybody for the great collaboration, so look forward to continuing to grow. Yes, sir.
Is there a place you can access your report? Is this the report that you have, or are you just talking?
I'm talking, I can give you this, it's also on our website.
It is on the website now?
Yeah, it'll normally be on Facebook, I can give you a copy of that as well. That's just a summary kind of what we're offering to the high school and other places.
May I?
Sure.
I want to commend you on the Microsoft, awesome idea right there, especially for young people coming up. You mentioned the dental chair and all that, do you charge for that?
It all depends on what health insurance is covered, yeah. It gets really complicated for me, because that's, call Gina Byrne at the Family Resource Center.
I understand it, because I do it, I was just, I'm not from there.
I don't understand it, I just know we've got two chairs in there, all the time, and I say, Gina Byrne, and she works it out for us. Those of you that know Gina, she's a real support. Yes, sir.
Yes, for the citizens that don't know where the Callahan Center is, could you explain where that is?
Oh, it's in Bellevue.
It's right behind the City of Golden Freedom Freedom's identity. It's called 616 Poplar.
16 Poplar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing I have, I just want to remind everybody, there's a planning and zoning meeting tomorrow night here at 7:00. I would encourage anybody that's interested in what's going on in the riverfront development in Ann Arbor to attend. There's, if you came to the January, February meeting, there's a new group of sub-developers that are looking to do two new phases of the projects, so they're going to be presenting what's called a pattern vote tomorrow, which is a general overview of the two phases that they've got to start. So that will be heard by the Planning Commission tomorrow, so it'll be a good opportunity for everybody that can make it to get the updated information of what may be coming in the future. So the next, that's tomorrow at 7:00 here in the same building that we're in right now, same room, 7:00 sharp, so hopefully everybody can make it. That's all I have here.
All right, thank you. City Attorney's report?
Nothing to report.
Consent agenda, the approval of the April 7th, 2015 State Council Meeting, and the motion for that.
Make a motion, we accept it. April 7th, the council meeting report is presented.
What's your bill?
I'll second the vote. I'll second the vote.
Come on, favor?
Aye.
Stand. We have the ordinance, ordinance and orders, second reading, 2015-2, establishing a revolving loan fund.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2015, number two. An ordinance, rescinding ordinance 2004, number nine, which established a revolving loan fund. This ordinance rescinds ordinance 2004, number nine, which established a revolving loan fund and was codified as section 35.0 in the City of Dayton Code of Ordinances. Second reading.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance as it's read. Second.
That's by Neary, second by Byrne. Roll call done.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Tucker.
Aye.
Member Baker.
Aye.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
First reading of...
Member Lynn. I'm taking, we're starting that off.
First reading of 2015-4, establishing a Main Street Board and Manager.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2015, number four. An ordinance establishing a Main Street Board and the Manager to revitalize, maintain, and promote the historic district. This ordinance creates a Main Street Board, which will further the implementation of a Main Street program, be responsible for revitalizing, maintaining, and promoting the city's historical district while maintaining its character and integrity. The Board shall primarily focus on the city's central business district within the historical district. The Board shall have the ability to create a forfeit entity. The Board will consist of five, seven, nine, or 11 persons who will be appointed by the mayor for staggering four-year terms. The members will elect a president, vice president, secretary, and secretary. And that's the first reading.
First reading, okay. This is the first reading of 2015-5, establishing a Civic Activity Board. This is a first reading of two thousand fifteen dash five, establishing a civic activity board.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, two thousand fifteen, number five. An ordinance establishing a civic activity board to participate and organize social and cultural events in the city. This ordinance creates a civic activity board which will participate and organize public social and cultural events within the city. The board will consist of five persons who will be appointed by the mayor for staggering four-year terms. The members will elect a president, vice president, and secretary for each two-year terms. And that's the first reading.
This is a resolution, two thousand fifteen seven R, license for little free library.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, municipal order number two thousand fifteen seven R. A municipal order granting a license for a little free library at four fifteen Sixth Avenue, two hundred Clay Street, and one thirty-six Grant Park Drive. Be hereby ordered by the City of Dayton, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that the city grants a license for a little free library to the owners of four fifteen Sixth Avenue, two hundred Clay Street, and one thirty-six Grant Park Drive. Section two, that the city authorizes the mayor to execute any document necessary to grant the license. Section three, that the order shall be maintained and indexed in the official order book by the city clerk treasurer.
I'll make a motion to approve. This is the first reading.
Now, this is a resolution, so...
I make the motion to approve the resolution. The only thing is on this resolution, at least my copy of the two hundred Clay Street is not included on there, just the Sixth Avenue and Grant Park Drive.
We had one come in today that I wanted to get in, so I... You should have enough here to copy.
You should have a copy. I need a copy on the top of everybody.
We got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Neri, second by Tucker. Any comments now? We'll sort this thing out.
Considering mine is part of the property you mentioned, I'd like to abstain my vote from this particular vote.
Mr. Mayor, there was a little bit of misunderstanding with some residents that somewhere it mentioned that the expiration date on this was May first. That doesn't apply for asking for one of these little libraries to put up. But I'm not sure, Michael, was that just part of the competition that they had or sponsorship from the public library or?
Was that on the application or?
No, it was a citizen that asked me and apparently they got the impression, I think from the application or the terms of the application, that the expiration was May first. They weren't clear on whether they could do one after that date.
No, they should be able to do one whenever they so choose. They just have to fill out the application. But May first...
I don't know where they got it.
I'm not sure. If they did have a competition or something, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they did have a competition. Started to pick the thing off. So that might came from there. Any more comments?
Yes, please.
Now, this is a bug. You can't comment on this. This is strictly council. Need a roll call done?
Member Tucker?
Aye.
Member Baker?
I abstain.
Member Gifford?
Aye.
Member Lynn? Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Barnes?
Aye.
So carried. Department head, Donna?
Everybody has a copy of the financials and that's all I have.
Building department, Annie?
Starting issuing violation notices for migraines and means of life this month. Also been working, collaborating with the fire and police department to close out some ongoing code violations that we have that hopefully we're wrapping up here soon. Looking to purchase some computer equipment to maybe help expedite the process out in the field. I'm still looking for that. And this Thursday we'll be interviewing children at the high school or the seniors at the high school for their work study program that we're hoping to have one of them working with us this summer. So other than that, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, we... Mr. Mayor, previously we used to get a written report from the public enforcement officer. Are we going to be getting that?
We'll be getting that.
Yeah, we're still...
Computer problems and stuff like that right now are in it all.
Great, thank you.
We'll get it cleaned up and see if they're going. The laptops will be able to print the report a lot quicker.
Thank you.
Police chief, Dave?
I just want to touch on a couple of things. The first, April, we might have seen some activity at the Druggie House. What we did, we collaborated with probation and parole. And we had several canines. We actually did a sweep of the Druggie House just to keep, make sure everything, make sure we have a presence there, that they know that we can come in at any time. Search beds, facilities, and things like that. So nothing was found during the search. We've had several hits with the canines, but nothing was found. Just the point was to just show a presence, a police presence there that we do watch and we can come in at any time with probation and parole. It was pretty good showing. We had about eleven probation parole officers, two canine units, and four Dayton units. So we wanted to report that we, you know, we're keeping up with the Druggie House with administrators and things like that. Just anytime they want us to come in, we'll come in and make sure they're doing what they need to be doing. Secondly, Shannon's not here. I was going to give an award. We talked about it with our neighborhood watch about citizens getting involved. When they see things happen to contact the police to let us know when things happen. This was April eighth. We received a call from Shannon Downer, called us and let us know. It was just one of those things that he heard a noise outside, thought he, you know, eh, you know, they're doing some work next door and thought, "Well, maybe I should look." And when he looked outside, he actually saw somebody climbing in a neighbor's window. And he actually called us, stood outside while I waited for Bellevue to show up. We only had one on that day. And we were able to apprehend the suspect as he came out of the house. And I was going to give Shannon an award. It was an outstanding citizen award. And that's just like I said, for, and talking to Shannon on the phone, you know, he's like, "You know, I just called the police. You know, I didn't really do much." But it really does mean a lot to us and we preach it in our citizens, our neighborhood watch programs about looking out, answer your neighbors, talking to your neighbors, let them know when you're going out of town, let them know when you're working. So if they are home, if they see something, to contact us, that it's not a bother. When they, you know, it's not a bother to call us. Just please call us. And that's one thing we're fighting right now is to get citizens involved and to call the police if you're not bothering us. We need more eyes out there and more help with the citizens. And I was going to present, Shannon was an award, an outstanding citizen's award. He's not here. He's got sports with the kids and I understand that. So I'll get that to him sometime tomorrow. But I would just want to give recognition to Shannon. Actually, our victim's right here, too. She's... The scar was the house that got broken into.
Can I just say, my daughter gave Shannon his wife a gift certificate for taking care of her mother?
Yeah.
So he did get some recognition.
Yeah, and, you know, like I said, and we have people here from the neighborhood watch program and we're trying to get, you know, more citizens involved and not turn the other cheek and, you know, just get involved with the community. And it's really helping right now. And I do want, you know, when we have something like this happen, we do apprehend suspects, that we recognize those citizens for actually saying something and standing up. So. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mark, keep on...
Evening, Mayor. How do you do? Council should have a copy of my report submitted. In that you'll find April EMS and fire training. Also this month our firefighters will have their annual physicals at Sandy and Edgewood. So that's one of the ones right now. You'll also find here fire inspections or smoke detectors that are provided to the citizens and our burn permits. One that also stressed that you cannot burn from now till October. That is per the natural resource of the EPA. That doesn't mean you can't have a fire pit, recreational pit of religious purposes in your yard. You're still allowed to do that. You're just not allowed to burn in garage and other things, garden. I would also like to stress, please be courteous of your neighbors when you live in closed quarters. Fire burning, be courteous of your neighbors because we do get the calls. Smoke traveling or fires being too close to a structure. You know, we like them. Maybe we're ten, fifteen feet away from the structure. We did have a fire meeting, a fire board meeting. It was the first time at the fire station. It went very well. We started having them at the fire station. Feel free to come. Our next meeting will be June seventeenth. It starts at six P.M. Bellevue High School and Dayton High School and Bellevue Police and part of Bellevue-Daten. We didn't have Bellevue High School on April twenty-fourth. The pre-pronoun went very well. Hopefully it made a difference. I haven't heard of anything, Nate, that went on that night. So hopefully it went really well. And the last thing that I have is just, I know on social media there was concern about our fire apparatus. Happy to say it's all running back in service. So your fingers crossed we can keep them on the road. And for council members, I do have McKee's notes, which is in my report if anybody would be interested in looking at those. It's like fifteen pages long. If you're more willing to stop at the fire station, I can give you a copy of that. So I guess right now we're all good to go and everything's running good. Any questions?
Thank you. Public Works, Rick?
I don't have a report, but if anybody's got anything for me. We're just staying busy.
Thank you. Anthony, Main Street?
Don't have very much. Last week, Main Street Board met, about thirty minute meetings. Not much to cover. We did, we are organizing two events with the Go Cincinnati group and Crossbridge Church to come in with volunteers. Community Garden will be getting a set of volunteers on May sixteenth. And the Avenue will also be getting a ton of volunteers on May sixteenth to flower the pots, organizing flower arrangements on the Avenue. The, that was probably the biggest topic at hand for the Main Street Board meeting. I think I included in most of your all packets the special event application for May twenty-fifth. It's Memorial Day following the one of the parade. Bellevue and Dayton are working together to do a kind of a, we'll call it block party, a town fest in the official title. Hopefully we'll have, we're planning on having food. Bellevue's reaching out. They have good relations with the health department. So we're going to schedule food. We'll have four or five up there. We'll have some non-live music, pre-recorded music playing. It'll be kind of low-key, it's kind of a chance to get to mingle with our neighbors. So me and Ben's been working really closely, you know, and we're pretty excited. But at this time, just to make sure we have all our done, our best council approval to go ahead with the event and answer any questions.
Need a motion to approve to basically close off the screening?
Yeah, yeah. It'll be the, it's our eight hundred block, Bellevue's two hundred block of town.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion just in conjunction with Bellevue too, because that is, that is part of their strategy.
Motion by Neri, second by Bill. All favor?
Aye.
Vote.
The only other thing before we close up, we haven't had any applications in for CCAP. I've been working with three businesses that are pretty, pretty well through the process. I was expecting one this week. I'll probably email you guys the report that I'm going to start sending and having each month with CCAP this week. I forgot to do that. Sorry about that. But it'll be a pretty standardized report. It'll be the same thing every week. You guys will see what we did the month before, this month, how it compares. There'll be a budget on there to make sure that I'm not, you know, going wild or anything with the businesses. But, you know, so that way everything's kind of up on me. I think you guys get a clearer vision of everything with that. This week we will be having an information session with property undertakers, business owners alike. That way they're all on the same page, what CCAP is offering them, what they need to do, and what my expectations are and your expectations. And answer any questions I can ask.
I would say, do you know what the dating place is going to be written?
They were originally looking at May. They had some issues with the county planning and zoning as far as getting their grease traps in and everything. So they're looking at June. Hopefully it won't conflict with what they're considering David mine. It's not going to be at a grand opening, but if not, we'll let you guys know when that is. So, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Kay, did you mention that there was an informational session for building owners and prospective business owners? When and where is that? Or is that open to the public?
I mean, it's open to public. It's not, but it's, it'll be Thursday, May seventh, in this room at six P.M. I mean, if you're looking to open up business, you're more welcome to come. It's not really, it's not no doubt. I bet you much, other than that, everything else will be included in my council reports. So we do, we do want to, you know, I don't want to take up all their time. They are working people. So a few questions. I want all the questions I can answer, but I want to make it quick and get focused on them.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
The course, Donna?
Yes, sir.
Standing committee report, finance, member Lynn?
The current budget is looking good and we did have a meeting on the new budget coming up, but we're supposed to have a no one, Michael.
Yeah, I'll send out an email tomorrow. I'd like to set one up for sometime next week. It seemed like everybody was comfortable with what we had proposed. We had a few suggestions, but I'd like to meet one more time and then after we meet, I can send out to council what we've come up with. Should be ready to go by the June council meeting. But I said, well, I'll touch base tomorrow. We'll set something up for next week. Just hope to meet one more time.
That's all I got. All right, thank you. Public safety, member Gifford?
Not really a lot. I'm working with the chief on the block watch program, but he informed me tonight that we're going to try to get some signs. I've got to find out from him what he wants to put on and then give people the opportunity to put those signs in your house saying, "This is a watch neighborhood. We will call the police" or something like that. That's a pretty effective tool. And I'm working on something right now and I'm trying to get some help for, in the Spears Court alone, I think we have twenty-five wheelchairs that are motorized. And I'm trying to get someone to work with me to get the flags put on them because most of them do not have them and they weave in and out of traffic as probably a lot of people have seen. So I would think that would be the least we could do. So I'm working, I've got two resources I'm working on for that. So that'll be part of it.
Nothing at this time resolved, but that's it.
All right, thank you. Public Works, member Barnes?
Public Works, sir.
Thank you. Carson Real Estate, member Tucker?
The park board has been working. Their biggest project they're tackling now is their remolting of the parks. So they've got some bids on that and they're working on getting that done. Then the other thing is they're working on a calendar of events for events within the park and then also baseball field scheduling. Our fields have been used a lot more than normally, which is a great thing. And they're working on putting a calendar together that they can get online. So anybody would be able to get online and see that. And hopefully it'll be on our Dayton website here in the coming months. That's all I have.
Thank you. Personnel law and training, member Neary?
I want to thank the city administration for getting the ordinances on the city website. Been asking for that for a long time and it's great. I don't have to haul that book here anymore.
Thank you, City Attorney.
No, it is great. And now everybody knows what we have to follow. One of the things that we have to follow is, and I know there's some people here tonight in reference to our ninety-one dot twenty-four Pitbull ordinance. About fifteen years ago, everybody around me had a Pitbull ordinance except Dayton. I know Mr. Berezky, you were on council at the time, and I think Mr. Gunn, you were. And it was kind of a reaction to that. Everybody else had pretty much the same ordinance, but since then, people, it's been revisited. Other cities have adjusted their ordinances. I know I have gotten a ton of calls. I know other council people have gotten a ton of calls and emails from both sides. I blew up my data plan last month on it. There's pretty strong feelings on both sides of the issue. Learned a lot. We're researching a lot. One thing we have to consider in an explosion with some litter carriers, some firemen that have been in some difficult situations, police officers in difficult situations. I think we need to take everybody into account here. The breed-specific laws are BSL, which I didn't even know about two months ago. Some people are fine with that and in fact want to expand it. Our responsibility as a council and personnel law and training committee is to pass legislation that, our primary responsibility, as you said, Mayor, is the public safety. And we also have to be fair to all of our citizens. I'm a dog owner myself. Some of the laws that we've researched so far are very lenient and it would be almost impossible to enforce. Some other ones are so restrictive that there would be a lot of citizens negatively affected by them. by them. I know Ohio State Legislature, and I know Bill, the Quanderich Act, if no one's familiar with that, the Ohio State Legislature actually took action on BSL, against getting rid of BSL, and putting in an aggressive state reform for nuisance dangerous and vicious dogs. The state of Kentucky has not, nor has the county. They're leaving it to the individual communities. So it's up to us to come up with an ordinance that works. I just wanted to let everybody know, we are working on this. It's been a lot of my time on this. I'm very open-minded, I think all of us are very open-minded on it. The law has been in effect for nine years now, and there are other examples out there that we can emulate. It won't happen overnight, because we have to make sure that it's an ordinance that is fair to everyone, especially the people, the public safety and the dog owners. So I just wanted to say that we, I know I'm putting a lot of time in on this, I know Mr. Baker is too. But we'll, we'll bring up an ordinance to the council for approval and discussion sometime in the near future.
You finished? Thank you. Backing on with the government, member Gray.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that as Mr. Cato pointed out, we are receiving applications for the C cap program. So that's certainly something that we're very excited about, and welcoming some new businesses into our Main Street, and growing that area. And with that in mind, there's gonna be a open meeting on May 7th at 6:00 P.M. in this room, for anybody who's more interested in what the C cap means, and how they can better utilize it, and how that we can help that grow our area. One more point, one more thing I wanna point out is, obviously, I think a lot of us, and I know Mr. Slough here is very excited about the All-Star Game, which is coming up in July of this year, where Cincinnati, first time since nineteen eighty-eight, will be welcoming the All-Star Game to our region. So I'm part of baseball across the region, which is trying to spread the spotlight beyond the ballpark area and to other communities, including Dayton, obviously. So on Thursday at noon, we would like to have a quick photo op to send to the authorities at Major League Baseball, that Dayton has invested in baseball. We are, we believe it's a wonderful sport that spreads camaraderie, leadership. And so if anybody would like to join us at noon down at Gilton Park, we'll be wearing red and taking a quick photo op and sending it off to Major League Baseball, and welcoming them to Dayton and the greater Cincinnati region for the Major League, Major League Baseball All-Star Game.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Petition, anybody got petition?
I do one real quick. I don't want petition or unfinished business. All right, I'll start off, unfinished business.
Well, then let's give the petition for the audience. That will do, unfinished business.
That's fine.
Anyone from the audience would like to speak?
I would, please.
All right. The paper will sign your name, your address, state, your name and address, for the record.
I'm new to the Dayton area. I live at six nineteen, six nineteen Eighth Avenue in Dayton. I am the one that started petition for Mr. Wade. It's over around five o'clock today. We have four thousand two hundred fifty signatures, with two hundred from Dayton, ninety from Bellevue, and about two hundred from Newport, in favor of dropping the pit bull ban in the city of Dayton. The rest, obviously, are just in support, because they are not from the area. My colleagues and I have formed a group called TAIL, T-A-I-L, together assisting innocent lives, and you'll be hearing a lot about us in the future. I started petition because the ban is outdated and unproductive. I'm looking at the ninety-one point two four pit bull terriers. It says in section B, it is hereby determined that pit bull terriers have inherently vicious and dangerous tendencies, and are potentially hazardous and unreasonably dangerous to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, residents, and inhabitants of the city. Therefore, the ownership, location, maintenance, keeping, harboring, or use of pit bull terriers in the city is hereby declared to be a public nuisance. Not only is it just the pit bull, which is not a breed, it is any dog that has a predominant physical characteristic, which are those of either the American Staffordshire Terrier or the Staffordshire Terrier Bull Terrier, indicated in the attached standards of the AKC Club or the American Pit Bull Terrier of the United Kennel Club. Per the ASPCA, it is likely that the vast majority of pit bull type dogs in our communities today are the result of random breeding, two dogs that are being mated without regard to the behavioral traits being passed on to their offspring. The result of random breeding is a population of dogs with a wide range of behavioral predispositions. For this reason, it is important to evaluate and treat each dog, no matter what the breed is, as an individual. Mr. Wade was asked by Animal Control to have a DNA test done, to prove that his dogs are not pit bulls. First of all, that's unconstitutional, and they cannot be used in any legal proceedings whatsoever. And the Wisdom Panel that is produced by Marz states specifically on their website, and I quote, "Many countries and provinces have breed-specific ordinances and laws that may require special handling or prohibit the ownership of some dogs with a particular breed in their genetic background. Wisdom Panel, which is the one that's used primarily by most vets, is not intended to be used by regulatory or animal control officials to determine whether a particular breed is legislated or banned in a particular country or province. Nor is Wisdom Panel intended to be used in any judicial proceedings. Rather, it is intended to be used as a tool or resource in determining a dog's genetic history. Neither Marz veterinarian nor any related company is responsible for compliance or notification regarding these matters. They are also commonly inaccurate. The canine heritage breed test also states that it is not an established legal tool, and they do not always get accurate results." I just want to follow up. I've got two comments from people that have signed the petition. One, Chanel Betty out of San Clements, California. "I have two pities. I didn't know that Kentucky had this law. We go there every year for vacation, was even thinking of buying land. Won't be supporting Kentucky or going there. I can't, your laws need to change. It's sad that you still have this in place. I will be passing this on to all the other people that love Kentucky. Please stop this stupid law." Marcus Huntley of Louisville, Kentucky states, "Most cities have lifted these inappropriate and outdated bans. Let this man keep his dog. I lived in Fort Thomas for two years with pits and never had any issues." I thought they were banned in Fort Thomas, but recently I have considered buying real estate in Dayton. However, I will not do this with a city that supports persecution and elimination of a loyal, mild-mannered, compassionate dog like a pit bull. The dog has been abused, neglected, overbred, and then labeled a monster by humans. It's time we have sent the people persecute the criminals who neglect and abuse pit bulls, not ban them as a group. So in conclusion, I know everybody is very excited about the Riverfront development. Are they aware, the people that are building all these new houses, are they aware that there's a pit bull ban here? Are they aware they can't visit the city with a pit bull ban? Because if they are banned in the city, you cannot visit the city and have a pit bull. So anyone coming in on a boat or living down by the river, you can't bring them in. If that's what the law says, which it does, it says they are banned.
Correct.
So in conclusion, I'd leave this pit bull ban. Dayton is unconstitutional. We have retained legal counsel, and I have his information for the city attorney, if you would like his information. I propose that Robert Wade be able to bring his dog, dogs home immediately, and the pit bull ban be lifted, and that we work on new laws that will be less complicated and, I lost another word, that will benefit everybody, because you can't just say that it's pit bulls. There's other dogs that fight and are not removed from the home, they are left there. Those are the vicious dogs. Those are the ones that should be persecuted, and their owners, not the dogs. Always the owner's fault. So persecute the owner. That's all I have to say.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? You want to?
I'm Robert Wade. It's my dogs that are in question. The one is a boxer lab mix. I was told because she has a character, she looks like a pit. I can't have her. The other one's deaf. They were responding to my handicapped niece and nephew, who was startled by the lady that don't even live on my block. My dogs, I've had them for a year and a half in this town. I lived here, moved back, been here two years. I'm born, bred, and dated. Never heard nothing about this law, never knew nothing of it. Pit bulls, I've seen them off throughout this town. Dogs running loose. There's a lady that made a comment that she walks every morning and evening down on Third Street, and there's a little, she called it a yapping dog, looked like terrier, changes her, bites her every day. She don't know where it lives, don't know nothing about it. My dogs have never been loose from the yard. I have an eight-foot privacy fence around my backyard with a padlock on the gate. They've never been out. My dogs were in the window barking at a lady who startled my niece and nephew. The window was about so high off the ground. My niece and nephew were handicapped, like I said. The dogs were in their lap, and they're very protective of them. Year and a half, there hasn't been a problem. There's all kind of dogs running loose in this town. Nobody says nothing about them. People get bit all the time. My dogs ain't bit nobody. They kept all their shots, up to date on everything. Now, the one, she is a pit mix. Didn't know nothing about the law. She's deaf. I rescued both of my dogs, are rescue dogs. The other one is a boxer lab mix. Why can't she be, why can't I have her? Because she looks like a pit? That's not right. I mean, you can look at the dog, and look at it, the dog catcher is not even AKC registered, or she's not registered by no breed, and I don't believe anybody on the city council that would make this law is registered by any breed, AKC or what's the other one, Lisa? Kennel Club standards, got any kind of membership to justify other than say, oh, I think it looks like this, therefore you can't have it. I don't believe that's right, for anybody, whether it be me, you, anybody in this audience. That's just straight prejudice. My dogs never bit nobody, don't beat out of the yard.
There's an ordinance against the dog, that's about.
Against the pit bull. I'll grant, I'll give you that one. What about my black dog? She's not a pit. My niece and nephew.
What about Animal Control? She is a pit.
And she's not registered. She don't have the mileage. She don't have no backing by nobody. Hell, kennel club breed, is she registered anywhere to make that judgment? No, sir, she's not. She somebody just got, put in an application for a job and got hired. I don't believe it's correct.
How you guys doing? I'm Chris Morton. I've been in front with Robert Wade. Used to live in Dayton, Kentucky.
Address, please.
I currently live at Airline, thirty-nine eighteen, Oklahoma Airlines.
It's a pit pit bull, if you would.
Sure, no problem. I currently have Robert's, one you guys call pit bull, one's deaf. It's been a lot of fun for me to have her, because she has a disability. I learned to work with that. I tell you right now, if you step foot in my house right now, the dog would probably lick you to death. But the one you're gonna worry about is my wiener dog. My wiener dog will tear you up. My wiener dog is there and protects my daughter. You make any quick movements towards my daughter, that dog will tear you up. The pit bull, she'll walk away from you. When I, when I say something, of course, it took me, what, two weeks? It's taken me almost two weeks to realize I'm, I'm talking to her, and she can't hear me. Wiener dog's looking like, oh, here I am. I say something, or I move towards my daughter, even me, in my own home, my wiener dog will protect my daughter. The pit bull, it's like Robert said, it's a dog, okay? Dogs will react to the way you train them, or you teach them, or you don't teach them. It's like people. It's ignorance. If you don't train or teach a kid to do things, he's not gonna do it. I mean, I'm sure people in here have teenagers, right? I have teenagers. I'm raising my kids, this is the, this is what you're supposed to do, this is the correct way to do it. You trust them to do it. When they leave out of the house, do they do it? Who knows? You're not with them all the time. But you do your best to train them. The dogs are the same way. If you train them to be mean, they're gonna be mean. I don't care if it's a wiener dog, a pickanee, a chihuahua, whatever. My other question is, is, I've been trying to look on multiple websites, whether it's this city, Pitten County, Campbell County, wherever. Where can I find on a website that states what dogs have been, who have bitten anyone? Is, is, is there, when the dog is picked up, when, when the dog bites somebody, when they pick it up, do they put that out to the public? Is there a report that's put out there that the dog bite was by a German Shepherd, Golden Retriever, a wiener dog? Is there a report out there that we can look at?
There's not a report. If it's from the police or the animal control.
But I mean, you'll find in hospitals, they got reports, they'll tell you what breed.
So I can go to?
You can probably go to any of these hospitals and get a report, tell them what type of dog, because they probably have to put on a report. But I think you're missing the point. The point is, we have an ordinance against them.
And how long ago was that ordinance put out?
Two thousand and six.
In two thousand and six. I'm not an expert on history, but I believe probably fifteen years ago, the dog that was, you weren't allowed to have, was a Doberman Henscher, okay? And then from there was a rottweiler. Okay, now a rottweiler, it's a lot like a pit bull, they got the jaws, they got the head, so it's a bull massive, okay? At what point in time do we realize it's not the breed that causes the problems? It's the ignorance of the people that control the dogs. Has nothing to do with the breed. I've had four pit bulls myself.
The pit bull would bite more people than anybody.
Really, yeah. No, no. It's very important. Okay, again, again, let's look at statistics. How many people actually documentation, put their documentations out there? You mean to tell me that every report is correct that goes out there, and every report is listed what the dog breed is? You can't tell what the breed is. You're looking at a dog, again, let's look at AKC registered people. My best friend raises, breeds, and uses show bloodhounds. He raises coon hounds. In order for you to get a job, or to be on the council, to be anything with, with this organization, you had to be AKC registered, to say, okay, yeah, I know what I'm talking about, okay? I've had several people look at the dog, that's a pit bull, I can tell. Look at the jawline, look at his ears, look at his head, look at his tail. If you look up any kind of bull terrier, they all have a muscular body, y'all have the same head, so it's a bull massive. But there's also other dogs. The number one dog that is not to be trusted, and are bad to children, is in every firehouse. It's a dalmatian. You can't trust them at all. Yes, sir?
I would say that, and we do have the ordinance, but I'm gonna say that of all the dogs there are, the pit bulls are gonna be the most recognized bites. I would say that every time there's a bite from a pit bull, then it's gonna go to the top of the circle.
Sure, well, because of what's.
But you're right, there are a lot of dogs that do bite. The problem is, we have the ordinance, and that's what we're trying to explain. If they do get a bad rap, some of them, every, every dog can be trained to be mean.
Correct.
But the problem is that the, the public view of the pit bull is probably cause for.
Does that mean fifteen years ago, you guys had a ban on Doberman Henschers? Because they were.
I don't know. I couldn't answer that.
I mean, it, it's, to me, again, it's, it's, it's all about the dog, it's not the dog, it's the dog owner, okay? You can have the nicest guy in the world, and he can be treated, and this street's his dog, eats it, smacks it, of course it's gonna bite you. Back when I was growing up, I had a German Shepherd collie mix. Nicest dog in the world, until you mess with me or my brother, and then he will tear you up, because that's what he was trained to do. Again, it's not the dog, it's the dog owner.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kami Nolan, and I live at 25 Franklin Avenue in Fort Thomas, Kentucky, where there is a pit bull ordinance. I am also with TAIL, together assisting innocent lives. What I'm here to tell you is what you were saying about pit bulls or the number one dog to bite is incorrect. I have brought you a picture of my son's leg, along with the health department report. I went to the health department to check Dayton, to see how many bites have been recorded with the health department that has went to the hospital. There are none. The health department says they do not record them. There's not one pit bull bite that shows from Dayton here. But I can give you paperwork that shows a golden retriever bit my son. And this bite, where he did have to go to the emergency room, he did have to have stitches. It states that it was a golden retriever. Again, it was an irresponsible dog owner. The owner was drunk, did not realize his dog was out in the yard. My son was walking down the sidewalk, the dog took off after him. He turned to run, the dog bit him in the leg. He called me on the phone frantically. I went down to the owner, asked for the owner's records. Guess what? The dog was never vaccinated. The dog was never needed or spayed. Who does, is this the dog's fault, or is this the owner's fault? This is the owner's fault. Again, going back to the health department, there is no records of any bite in Dayton, Kentucky whatsoever. I have been there, I have checked, they said they do not log them.
Yeah, we don't, we don't send it to the health department. We send it strictly to the hospitals, but we have a general form that the state gives, and we send them to the closest hospital out of Fort Thomas. We don't send them to the health.
And the hospital also states that when there is a dog bite that comes in, they are bringing it to the hospital.
And what they do with them at the hospital from there, I...
But apparently, there's not been any pit bull bites so vicious that they've had to go to the hospital, or reported them to the hospital, is my statement. So this picture right here shows you the bite. My son still has a scar that he will carry for the rest of his life because of a golden retriever. And you're saying that a pit bull is more aggressive? I hardly think not.
I don't have an ordinance to ban golden retrievers, but I do have an ordinance to ban pit bulls. And unless the council changes this ordinance, this conversation could go on all night. But the truth of the matter is, I don't know about anybody here, if the council has a control to change this ordinance, if they want to, or pushed out.
Public safety does have...
But as far, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it, it affects, I'm going to enforce this ordinance.
Okay. And, and that's totally fine. But what you need to understand is, you guys are saying that the pit bull is the number one dog to bite. Any dog can bite. It's not just the pit bull. Any dog can bite. Any breed can bite. A pit bull is not a pit bull.
I don't want to be at point one bit, yeah, any dog can bite. But we have an ordinance against that particular dog.
And I understand that. And my question again is, where can I find record with your city of how many pit bulls have bitten in this city?
You just said that. You reported to the hospitals?
Obviously, we're not going to have pit bull bites because we have the ban, so there's no...
But you've got twenty of them in your town.
Well, if you got a list of them, I'd be more than happy to take them.
That's not my job, sir. My dogs are spayed, spayed, and had all their shots and records. I am a responsible owner. My game is padlocked. They're kept in the house.
Also, on the back of this paper, is a paper from the ASPCA that will tell you, since you have this breed specific law, what will happen? What will happen with these pit bulls? People will take them underground where you won't find them. People will do this. People will do illegal activities because you have this breed specific law. And like I said, I am with TAIL, together against assisting innocent lives, and we have retained counsel, and we, we are going to give your city attorney our lawyers, our phone number and address, because he will be contacting us and he will be filing suit. Because this is, this is our right to own. Our dog is our private property, it is our right to own whatever dog we would like. And I would ask that you please revise the pit bull, and let Mr. Wade keep his dogs.
Good evening. Jeez Louise, what a tense crowd in here, right? Well, here's what I'm going to say. First of all, I am not a dog person, never owned a dog. I'm fifty-four years old, and I've never owned a dog, always had a cat. I met Mr. Wade's dogs a couple of months ago.
Did he give you a payment address?
Sure, I'm going to, sir, since I'm engaged.
I need it for the record.
Yes, sir, and I shall certainly put it on here, because that is my civic duty. I'm almost certain he's right. So what I want to say is, I met his dog...
What is your name and address?
Oh, my name is Vicky McIntyre. My address is 3359 Wonder Avenue, Cincinnati. And the reason I'm here, no, I did not live in Dayton, born and raised here myself, thank God, got away. But the reason I'm here is because, I met his dogs. I'm not a dog person. His dogs are like lap dogs. I mean, jeez Louise, they've been to my house, and I even let the dog in my bed, and for that to happen, it's huge. But what you're talking about is because his black dog looks like a pit bull, which a lot of people would disagree with you, and you have said that even if he got a DNA test and could prove that his dog is not a pit bull, the city of Dayton would not allow him to keep it because it looks like a pit bull. That's racial profiling in every sense of the word. I've served my country for ten years, and the last thing I want anybody to do is come up to me and say, well, jeez, Vicky, you like a, you look like a big old paint balloon, so I don't think you should be able to live in my city. I didn't serve my country for that, and our constitution is being trampled by the government because you keep wanting to infringe your rights on our rights, the constitution. So I'm going to acknowledge to you that Mr. Wade is wrong. He should have, I suppose, gone and asked what the city ordinance do. But do you really think that every person who rescues an animal from abuse, or whatever Mr. Wade rescued his dogs from, do you think they go to their city and say, oh, hey, am I allowed to have this dog? Probably not. That's your job to educate people. And this is a ban that obviously a lot of your citizens know nothing about. His dogs were on his property, and had a lady pop up in his window on his rental property, of which she had no business being there, but none of that is acknowledged. Let's just say, jeez, this lady startled this guy's dogs, and they barked at me, so therefore, let's, let's pick on Robert Wade today. It's your job to educate people.
Excuse me. First of all, you live in Cincinnati. I wouldn't want to live in Cincinnati. This is our little town. If you don't like it, that's okay, but we don't have to be degraded. We do the best we can. And there's a lot of problems in Cincinnati, other than pit bulls.
Heck, yes, sir, it is. My neighborhood is terrible.
Just letting you know, I don't think you have to stoop to that level, because we're good people.
Yes, you are. My family's from here, sir. And I am amazed at what your school board is doing. I think that's great. Jeez, the statistics in there, I'm proud for, I'm proud for the city of Dayton, and I'm not ashamed to be from here. I just learned that I have choices.
I personally take offense to your comment of, thank God I got out of here.
That's fine, that's my...
That's perfectly your, your comment, and truthfully, you know, I think we have an open-minded council, but, but those comments are unwelcome.
I acknowledge that you take offense to that, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, my point is, it's racial profiling, no matter what you call it. If this gentleman can prove that his dog is not a pit bull by your request of a DNA test, why would you say, I don't care, it still looks like one, and I'm not going to allow you to have it? That's my point. Thank you, have a good evening. No disrespect, man, honestly.
Good evening. My name is Katie Platon. My address is 3440 Alta Vista Avenue in Cincinnati. And I am here today...
Can you put that on the paper, please?
Oh, yes. I'm here today first to, actually, thank you, especially Councilmember Mary, for at least opening the dialogue here. I am the president and one of the co-founders of Cincinnati Pit Crew, and one of the main portions of our program and our organization is working with local councils to really understand your animal welfare program, or your animal welfare ordinances, really looking at what's working, what's not working, what language is unclear to citizens living in the, within the confines of the city. I've taken a lot of time to look at the board animal code, not even specifically related to pit bulls, but just, you know, the goal is for public safety. And so I want to thank you for even being willing to look at this. A lot of what we run into is councils that aren't even willing to look at strengthening the code, whether it ends up working in our, our favor or not. It is, animal code is definitely something that needs to be looked at regularly. Two thousand and seven was the last time, I believe yours was really updated. And so I want to thank you for taking the time to be willing to look at this. I think you'll all agree that nothing gets people going more than the dogs. You said you've spent a lot of time already looking at this and killed your data plan. I've been there many times with this. I've worked a lot with councils. I've done some internships and some special workshops on language and jargon and the semantics of these things, so I'm happy to give you guys some information and kind of, I know I've been emailing with a couple of you, some, just some of my, my moments of wisdom to look at things. And so I'm happy to work with you guys. If you have questions, or want to look at some other local laws and ordinances that have, that have really, there's, there's some locally that look real good, and they take a lot of time to really put the work in. They are longer than others, but I think if you really want to cover all breeds and all, all types of owners, and the leash laws, and the tethers, and the confinement, and all of those things, if you really want to, you don't want to get too specific, but you want to be specific enough that everyone's protected. So I think I've emailed a couple of you, and you guys have my information, so if you guys want to reach out, if we want to do some partnership, I'm happy to help out with that. Thank you for being willing to look at this, I appreciate it.
One of the problems that we're really having in research...
Hold on. You got change to take. You're fine, Katie. You got change to take.
Oh, okay. I realize I talked too long.
Understood, understood. My point, and it doesn't have to be recorded, is that... It does, it does. I apologize. One of the problems, you can cite data all you want, and I, I know some other council members, I know I've been on a lot of different websites and links that have been sent to me. This is a very polarizing issue. And the data depends on who site you're looking at. And the problem with the data, as I just said, off camera, is there is no standard reporting in most municipalities, in most states, and definitely not in the state of Kentucky, that you have to report the breed, that every dog bite has to be recorded. So taking that into consideration, and I'm not trying to downplay that we are looking at this, we're taking this very seriously. I think, really, this is a state-level issue. It really is. Most states have, there are many states that have declared VSLs unconstitutional, Kentucky has not. We get very little direction from the state on these ordinances, and when you're put in a position of having to guard public safety, it's a big problem. I think you have to realize the history, though, of how this came about. Dayton was the last city. We didn't have a VSL. We didn't have a pit bull law. And when everybody else, Cincinnati included, established one, we got flooded with pit bulls. And we were late to the game, but the pit bull ordinance that we have in place was pretty much boilerplate what everybody else had.
Yeah, the language is pretty standard. If you look at even all the municipalities in the Cincinnati area that still have them, it's that same language of declared vicious, declared public nuisance, inherently dangerous. But there's nothing to really, who, who made that judgment? Who validated that? So there's, that kind of leaves things open to litigation a little bit, but... And you guys use the AKC standards and the UKC standards for visual identification, where it's the same, those same organizations also say that the pit bull-type dogs are great with families, great with kids, and are generally people dogs. And so the same physical breed discrimination, or breed identification standards you're using also say that they're great family pets. So that kind of, that's where I think some of that, that discrimination comes into play. But I think, in this instance, if you have strong enough vicious dog ordinances and dangerous dog ordinances in place, then there's not, there really is no need for the mention of a particular breed. Because if you have the, those, those, the dangerous dogs, the harboring of dangerous animal that you guys have in your standards now, when you, you kind of open up the door and it's not a pit bull, but it doesn't meet those very general, those general specifications, you kind of put yourself in a vulnerable position, too, if it's a rottweiler that does this horrible thing. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, when you just particular, point out one particular breed, you know?
I just want, I just want it understood, because the implication that Dayton alone is doing this and being discriminatory at that time, in the mid-two thousands, two thousand and five, everybody had the same ordinance.
Yeah.
And we may be behind the times in updating it, and we've got a whole new council here that was not in place when this was, and we're looking at it.
Yeah, it's a lot, you think these things come and go.
I was on the council, remember?
I'm saying, of us present, six council members.
I, I mean, I know, we just appreciate the fact that you're even willing to look at it. Like I said, if it goes one way or the other, maybe at least we're still giving it some time and some, it deserves a look. The trend is definitely moving the other way, and so, I mean, that happens to all types of ordinances.
And the information that you sent was very valuable.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, ma'am, my name is Shayna Boffman. I am making, I am behavior counselor.
Did you have an address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 540 West Street, Dayton, Ohio. I understand, I, I am a Ohio resident, I know, oh, are you here? No one does, I understand, but I actually was the first to sign through the North Kentucky area with my dogs, they were actually social rescue. Unfortunately, due to their physical injuries at the job, I had to retire them, but still very much loved the North Kentucky area. But what I wanted to do is offer my help to you guys in response to any, especially legal, any questions that you guys have about VSL. To tell you, I have been, gosh, I've been doing this for many, many years, in an animal rescue, animal shelter. I have the authorization to have an animal euthanized if I feel that the temperament is not safe to put out into the community. I can tell you to take that very seriously. I do come up against opposition constantly, of the dog is so sweet, the dog is great with this, or with that. If I see this dog does not have the basic characteristics to go out in our society and be safe under all circumstances, I can't sign for that dog to go back into our, our society. One thing I'd like to tell you guys, too, is please really heavily look at the ownership. I also do court cases, animal defense court cases, as the professional on the witness or prosecution, and I actually will evaluate these dogs that are in question from the judge. If the judge grants me the order to go in and do the evaluation, it's a very serious issue for me. There's many people's emotions that are riding on this. There's also a lot of people who are sometimes relying on these dogs in particular. But it all comes back to, going back to the judge, to say whether this dog is, first, safe to go back into the society, and, second, are these owners capable and worthy of owning this dog? I've had some situations where I've recommended the dog is fine, the owner's changing hands. So my encouragement to you guys, and again, I, I offer my services, that you guys are welcome to come and spend some time with me, see what I see, come help... to come and spend some time with me, see what I see, kind of help you guys, you know, get an idea of what really goes on in the animal world, because, let's face it, it's very closed if you're not in it all the time. It's got a lot of its own jargon, it's got a lot of its own cliques and niches, if you will. But one thing that I absolutely stress to everybody is, please, please enforce the ownership. Please enforce the owner's responsibility of the animal. I have a dog right now that has been turned in three times. This dog is a great dog. Owner is not responsible. The owner is not worthy of this dog. If I see dogs come in, and they could be potential for search and rescue, cadaver, bomb, drugs, narcotics, I will make that call to the appropriate authorities and ask them to take a look at the dog. So there are some of us out there, right? We are very few and far between, I understand that. But I wanted to let you guys know that there are avenues. Myself, the other ones I work with, we are neutral parties. We are here to give you fact of what we see out of the dog. We are not here to interpret it with our emotions. And believe me, when I had to put a few dogs down, broke my heart, because they were good dogs, but they're not meeting the quality standards to be put out into society. The dog is not good with dogs and children. That's questionable. Can it be rehabilitated to do both? If it can, and it can be sustained, and the owner's responsible for that, that dog can go to society. It cannot. That's a question. That's something we have to answer. I mean, kudos to you guys for looking at this. Yes, you're right. Cincinnati, when the band came in, everybody went over here, Dayton, Kentucky, because it was wide open. And you're right, around that 2006 mark, that was the peak of VSL. That was the peak of, it was almost like a manhunt, if you will.
In 2006, when all that happened, the guitar player in my band is a meter reader, was a meter reader, and he went into a basement to read a meter, and a pit bull broke a chain and had 200 stitches in his leg. He still can't walk properly. That's when all that happened. The guys in the basement there were doing a deal. The dog was trained to hurt somebody. But the point is, this is a first I've heard about. I don't know if you all, Joe Neary apparently is the only one that knows what's going on here. But we have to have time to do something. We could take the whole meeting. I think you should just give us, give us your information and let us, let us do a judgment as a council.
Right. And just so you guys know, I do not have the permission, if you're present, to say who they are, but there is a very large round delivery service that I do their dog safety for them, and all over the tri-state, even actually here in O'Kentucky, too. And the tips that we have with them, you know, is to keep them, first and foremost, safe. And I'm very sorry, right in front of us, that...
It's a bad one.
Is unacceptable. Yeah. You know, I mean, honestly, I have three service dogs. I will put them up. They're buried dogs for retirement, social rescue, and you know what? I put them up because I don't want somebody to feel threatened, even though, you know, if it's, especially at my home, you know, it's not a home chart, dogs are very different like that, I understand that. But still, it's part of, I want somebody to feel safe. I don't want them to feel threatened. That's my responsibility to make sure that the dog is in control.
I'll look into that with dogs, too.
Yes, I agree. All right, let me just tell you, two little yappy ones are on the corner. But please, I'd be happy to help you guys. You're welcome to come with me to see, you know. Again, my door is open to you guys. You know, thank you for considering, thank you for doing this, because I feel for you. It's a hard position, and like Kat said, it is, it's very emotional. And people who I have, some of the, actually, I work with a lot of canines, too, in Ohio. One thing we talk about all the time is, you've never seen somebody get so crazy over defending their animals. You would never see that level of crazy over another human. And I'm sure, sir, you've probably got some experience on that one, too. So, but...
Did you put your phone number on there?
Oh. I can do that, too.
I'm sorry, I didn't enjoy your email.
It's Shayna. I say Shayna. You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And again, God bless.
Anyone else have anything?
Is there, is there anything the people, the citizens can do to help you guys change this judgment? Is there anything it can do?
No.
It's a council.
It's up to the city council to change the ordinance they want to change. They can do nothing, they take no action at all, that ordinance stays in effect. The ordinance will be in effect even if they do change it until they change it.
As Mr. Neary mentioned, we've received, and I don't think I speak by myself, I think I speak about all council, we've received many, many, many emails, phone calls, a tweet or two concerning, concerning this. And I've done a lot of research, I've spoken with veterinarians, I've spoken, you know, with different groups, trying to get the best information together. So we're certainly not taking it lightly, and we certainly appreciate, I believe, I, again, I don't speak by myself, I believe we speak as a whole, we appreciate your enthusiasm for the ordinances that are on hand, respecting the ordinances that are on hand, and understanding that we are taking a look at them.
Is anyone else that would like to speak to the council about this issue? If not, we can wrap this issue up for now. Good, okay? Elmer, you could talk.
Museum's open Saturday. 10:00 to, and we will be open Memorial for the parade and everything. We'll have the museum open, and we are decorating for the All-Star game. We're going to be decorating the All-Star game.
Elmer, do you know about Charlie, the birthday card thing?
Uh, no.
Or somebody go bring it in?
Oh, excuse me.
Were you the only one that got one?
No one.
Anything else on that?
No. Thank you. I wear my tie over here.
You're fine. Anyone else like to speak to council? Is there a podium, please?
I just want to make a comment about him, the day of watch. I think he's doing a tremendous job. I would even know I locked my storm door when I went on vacation.
Anyone else like to address the council? Just fine. Does council have any...
I have one question for a place, chief. Do you want me to step up there?
I'm just curious about the app, the status of the app, does it...
The SentiGuard? SentiGuard app? Yeah, it's, it's still up and running. We're still getting tips as we speak, if not a weekly basis, providing us information, like I said, throughout the town. We do have, at the city building, as you come in, in front of the police department, we do have the pamphlets on file. So if anybody still, if they don't have the SentiGuard app, I want to come in and need more information on it, we do provide it. All right, thank you.
I have some unfinished business. I think, as we all know, there's a gentleman who's graced our streets, our lives, and our minds for the last 90 years. His name's Charlie Tharp. He's been a blessing to our community. His family is well-known, and we all, I believe, respect him. And we're just lucky to have him as part of our community. Well, May 18th is his 90th birthday. 90 years, that's amazing, isn't it? He's a, he's a veteran of World War II, fought many battles, and he's happy, and he's so sharp of mind, he's happy to tell you about all of them. So there, one thing that Charlie's family mentioned to us, and if you don't know this or not, but Charlie's family donated our museum that we're so proud of over here on the avenue, is that Charlie doesn't throw away a birthday card. And so, when you think about that, 90 years of being a really cool guy and getting probably a lot of birthday cards, that's got to be a stack of paper right there. So what I thought would be cool would be, is I brought some birthday cards. I thought if we could all just wish Charlie a happy 90th, maybe a 90 more, because we could sure use a lot more neighbors like Charlie. So I'm gonna go ahead and pass these around, and y'all want to sign them, you'll probably keep them for a long, long time.
Charlie also played in the USO tours with Jack Benny and Bob Hope. He's in Northern Kentucky Music, like...
He's a heck of a neighbor.
Anybody else have unfinished business?
We figured he'd throw away a used toothpick and straw except everything else.
Anyone else have any unfinished business? New business?
I've got a special event application. I got a few event applications I'd like to go through. We have actually two applications for the same date and are around the same area. I think one of the representatives, Mr. Frank's here, and from what I understand, they're kind of working together. At first, I thought there may be an issue, but I think, as far as I know, both groups are working together to have to, but the times are kind of staggered, so they're not all one way and while the other one's still going wrong.
You've only talked to Dan, so...
The first one is for the Dayton Eagles.
You left me up.
From 2:00 to 11:00 p.m., and they want to do their, they've done this several years in a row, that's from 2:00 to 11:00 p.m. And they close off the alley between Sixth and Berry and Fifth Street. And then, Mr. Frank's here, and he's doing the, has a request for the Psalm Ministries at the Town Center, so they're really close, but I'd like to kind of explain how they're collaborating, or maybe I'm wrong.
I think we'll just speed off of each other if we're both there at the same time. If you don't know, I'm founder of Psalm 147 Ministries and Psalm Festival. This will be our third annual Psalm Festival in Dayton. It's a Christian music festival with slash free children's festival. So we provide games, prizes, food to all the kids, face paint, a whole bunch of activities. It's all free day. I don't think there's many places in this country you can go and get a free day of children's festivities. So we present that to Dayton. I was born and raised here, and that's why it's here. So also, 100% of the funding for the festival has come outside of the city. It's good Christian people with good hearts who see my passion and just wanted to help. So I thought that having a fundraiser in town would have let the community get in on helping us provide the kids with a free day. It's also a free day of Christian music for the adults, and they can sit back and relax and have a great time. The kids are fenced in, they can't get out. So, you know, we, it's provided security, the park is set up that way. All we want to do is, hey, we're gonna have, I had a couple of Christian bands that wanted to come, they offered to come down and play and do a fundraiser, so all we're gonna do is set up a small stage, small sound system. We're gonna grill out and do some Rod's Met's hot dogs, do some drinks. So it's all, it's all donation for this, donation for that. All the money goes directly back into the festival. Last year, the carryover from what we made down to the festival, we were able to feed, we took Christmas groceries to 51 families in Dayton. With the help of Tammy and Craig and a few other people, there was a lot of people in town that stepped up to the plate and offered a lot of the items that we delivered there. And also, at the fundraiser, there's children's, there's a girls' dance ministry that's conducted up to Dayton W City, or Dayton W Church. I don't know if any of you guys know about it, but it's called Dance for David. There's a young lady from Fort Thomas who, she is the leader of the Northern Kentucky dance team. She brought her ministry down here to Dayton two years ago, and she started with 11-year-olds, and this is her third dance classes. And she has 29 young ladies that are involved in this. And they are gonna come down to the fundraiser around 2:30, and they're gonna perform a song that they've been learning. So it's like a get over the stage right thing for the recital. So they're gonna be there, so around 2:30, so if any of y'all in town want to stop by and support them, that would be great.
Hey, Rick, there's a couple of questions. The Dayton Eagles event, the title's Jamming on Berry, and it looks like y'all are gonna have a band, too.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be set up in their yard, up behind their fence, over in the other corner. We're gonna be back, kind of like where it was for the Fall Festival, and we're gonna be earlier than they are. So we're gonna work it out that it doesn't conflict, and it's almost so far away around the corner that it ain't gonna make much difference anyway.
So we're just, we're just closing the alley, is that correct? Is that all we're doing?
You don't have to do anything for me.
For the Eagles.
For the Eagles, whatever they, whatever they ask for.
Sixth and Berry, so that's...
That's good.
Which they've done in the past, and they're leaving approvals of that. Those are the questions I wanted to get hashed out, make sure they're not gonna be competing against or something yet. So, as I said, the Dayton Eagles, requested from 2:00 to 11:00 on Berry Street. Rick Frank and his group wanted to do a monument from noon until 5:00 p.m. on the same day, so now that that's kind of happened...
That'd be a little over there.
Yeah, we'll probably, we'll probably even have done earlier than that.
And you'll need a motion.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, hold on.
I would suggest, from having had different events down there in the city square in conjunction with the Eagles, I would suggest cutting it off from 6:00 to 5:00. Otherwise, you get people turning the corner, and that can be traffic problems, and it really would...
That's what he said.
I said from the alley.
No, I said they want the alley closed off, and he said, yeah, but he said it went from 6:00 to 5:00 closed off.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So that's what I said, we need a motion to be able to close the street.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by you, to close the street between 5:00 and 6:00 for the Dayton Eagles. I'll second. Second by Joey. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? No worries. You want to say something, Frank?
As far as I know about the Eagles event, the bands are gonna start at 5:00. So you guys are probably, you have any... More likely, we want to start right at 5:00. That was a little late. Yeah. I will...
Thanks, appreciate your time.
I'd like to make a motion for both events, both Psalms 147 Ministries event as well as the Dayton Eagles event, to be able to take place.
Second, motion by, motion by Chair, second by Gifford, to, for both events, the Dayton Eagles and also the Psalm 147. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No worries.
Last one I have is for a quarter tournament that we coach plays in Gillette on September 12th. I'm not gonna ask for a motion on that. Joey, I'll pass it on to you to take to the park board, with that as a schedule.
Okay.
And that's all I have there.
We don't need Bill, Dick, or anything? I need, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Bill?
I'll second.
Second by Joey. All in favor?
Aye.
Back there.